Ooh, steak's gotta be good. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Desiree, can we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigada?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Chavez?
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Present.
Y'all please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for being here tonight. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 27th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And at this time, we have a presentation of a plaque. Mayor Pro Tim?
This is an award in appreciation to Mr. Joe Gallardi. In grateful appreciation for 20 years of dedicated service to the community, thank you from the Raton Water Works from 2003 to 2023. And I understand you're gonna accept this award for him?
Yeah, Joe couldn't be here, but I'll see that he gets that.
Very good. It's a nice setting.
Right.
I'm gonna get a photo.
Okay.
Might need to scooch it just a little.
Scooch just a little. It's a technical term. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll take items from citizens present. However, if you're here to speak about an item that is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that item comes up. If not, we will take... Speakers, you got three minutes. See none, we will move into the business. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of May 23rd, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Should've had a chance to look at them.
I saw no blade here, so I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve with a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on board appointments to Extraterritorial Zoning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor Commission, we do have appointments to these two boards. They are two distinctly different boards. Uh, and on the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission, I'll just go over the rules real quickly. That is created in a joint powers agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County to zone generally that three-mile area outside the municipal boundary. Uh, under that joint powers agreement, uh, the city commission appoints two members to the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. Colfax County appoints two members to the, uh, to the ETZ. And then those four members appoint a fifth at-large member. We have, uh, one of the city-appointed seats that, uh, we're looking for a reappointment. You have the application of Randy L. Madison. He is, uh, currently the chairman of the city Planning and Zoning Commission, and he has also served on Extraterritorial Planning Commission previously as well. So that would be a reappointment, I understand. Uh, secondly, uh, you have an application to the city Planning and Zoning Commission. This is from, uh, this is submitted by Alexis Dixon. You have, uh, the application and the credentials of Mrs. Dixon in your packet for consideration. Those are the two applications that we have for the two, uh, appointments.
All righty. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
Two good applicants, I'll move to approve both of them.
A second. Motion and a second to approve both applicants. Mr. Madison for the ETZ, Mrs. Dixon for the city zoning board. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate and act on operating agreement with the city of Raton and the Colfax County Senior's Inc. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, uh, you have a copy of the proposed operating, uh, agreement in your packet, uh, between the city of Raton and the Colfax County Senior Citizens Incorporated. Uh, the Colfax County Senior Citizens, uh, is the service provider for services related to the, uh, senior's center. Uh, the building that they operate out of, located on South First Street, is owned by the city of Raton. Uh, this is a, uh, uh, consideration of a reapproval of an existing agreement, actually a long-term, uh, standing agreement. Under this, the city also provides, uh, some of the utilities, generally the city-provided, uh, utilities. Some maintenance and repairs, uh, snow removal. I think under maintenance repairs, things like, uh, some mowing or some, uh, some maintenance of, of facility. Uh, recently, the city did work on re-roofing a portion of the building. Uh, we're currently working with that group as far as, uh, some kitchen improvements. We typically, uh, under that, under the agreement, have, uh, uh, an improvement project going that is generally funded through state funds. But this would be a consideration of, uh, renewal of an existing agreement. Mayor, you might have some comments on this too, from your lengthy experience, uh, with the facility?
It, you know, it's a standard agreement. It's basically, we're not we're anymore. They provide service to the community. For instance, they're projecting to do 49,000, uh, home-delivered meals this year in the Raton area. That works out to approximate cash value of $319,800. So it's a service well worth it, and this is generally, and I received as in-kind service, so.
I would just add to that that the agreement is proposed for the upcoming fiscal year, when you return.
Let's get to me. I'll make a motion to accept the operating agreement between the city of Raton and the Colfax County Senior's Inc.
A second. I have a motion and a second to accept and adopt the operating agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Senior Citizens, Inc. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on capital appropriation agreement 22-G2-791 between the city of Raton and Department of Finance and Administration for Kearney School Film Project. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor Commission, um, we've been at, we've been waiting, uh, receipt of this agreement from Department of Finance Administration for, uh, some time now. They had laid out some special requirements, and we have met those special requirements. They had indicated that we've met everything that they had asked for, and it was all good. However, I have not received the agreement from DFA to this point. I would expect that where we're at, uh, in the fiscal year, we will not see this until, uh, July. I'll find out some clarification from DFA, but we do not have that agreement for your consideration tonight.
All righty, I would recommend a motion to postpone.
I will make that motion, postpone the signing, till we get the agreement. Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item D until your arrival or the delivery of the agreement. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on Sugar Reed Avenue Project Change Order Number One. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, this is related to the Sugar Reed Avenue project with, uh, the construction of, of, uh, bike lanes. And we have the unusual situation where we're a little under the budget here, so we've, uh, considered some additional work. Uh, really, a couple of items, uh, in this change order. Number one, we would like to add colored concrete to the, uh, to the paving that's gonna take place inside those newly constructed medians. The specs called for gray concrete, but, uh, we'd like to put colored concrete in there. That's a safety consideration. So, uh, you do see, uh, a little north of $18,000 proposed from the contractor. That's Magnum Welding and Construction, uh, for providing colored concrete. Um, the thing about colored concrete is it really takes special handling as far as, uh, you gotta pour, you gotta place that all at one time. There's special procedure to clean out the equipment once you put colored concrete in it. Uh, and then just the color itself is, if you get, uh, you know, a good quality color, it's, it's an expensive option, so about $18,000 for that. And then you see, uh, some balancing around of, of some quantities, but generally, we would like to add some reinforced concrete valley gutter at a couple of intersections there where, uh, we originally didn't know if we'd have the funding to do that. So, and, under the change order, uh, the amount would increase $39,195.68. That will bring the contract price to $909,775.88. Uh, there is no, uh, time change for consideration of, of this change order.
Cool. Any comments, questions?
It's my understanding that this is still within the budgeted funds that we have for the project?
That's correct, Commissioner. Yes.
And the color, I believe, is red, you said?
It's red. It's a red color, yep. And, uh, you know, just to kinda go over, we, uh, we are funded through a grant with New Mexico Department of Transportation under their Transportation Project Fund. They provide 95% of the funding on this. We provide 5% of the funding. Uh, so, yes, this is, uh, this is, uh, funds that we have budgeted, and, you know, we apply it to the project or turn those funds back.
Right.
I'll make the motion to approve Sugar Reed Avenue Project Change Order Number One.
Oh, second.
A motion and a second to approve Project Change Order Number One for the Sugar Reed Avenue Project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County for vector control services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, the, uh, uh, the vector-controlled service agreement generally deals with the spraying for control of mosquitoes. That's the, that's the vector that we're talking about. And it, that service is provided by a contractor to Colfax County. Colfax County has sent you an agreement, uh, and it's a standard agreement that we've done for years where they would, uh, provide spraying or fogging within, uh, the city boundaries for an amount not to exceed $3,000. Now, we didn't spray last year. Last year was an exceptionally dry year, and the presence of mosquitoes, you know, typically, uh, runs with, uh, however much rain we have and having stagnant water sitting around. Certainly, this year, we are gonna see, uh, a healthy population of mosquitoes. I think we already have mosquitoes out there. Uh, we have, you know, the, 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 the con to this is, uh, we understand that the product used in controlling mosquitoes is also not good for the pollinators, specifically bees. And, uh, we've talked about that a couple of times at commission meetings. I don't know of a better option right now. I hope that in the future, we, we can find a bee-friendly option. But this is not our contractor. It is provided by Colfax County, and we're in mosquito season. So I bring it to you with that consideration, knowing that, uh, you know, we have talked about being a pollinator-friendly community. Now, I would just add to that, that, uh, individual property owners or people can, can opt out of the spraying. You just simply call the office and say, "Hey, I don't want them applying, uh, any spray around my house or my property," and we'll, we'll communicate that to the contractor, and they won't spray in the immediate vicinity of, of your house or your property. So we have that option for property owners. We'll reinforce that as we go along. But I'll answer any questions you have on the vector control. There it is for your consideration.
Well, we had, uh, the same thing, uh, the last year that we had this, and there were several people that were, that had beehives and everything. And there was, they didn't have any problems with the people, uh, you know, they would stop spraying. They wouldn't spray in their general area. And still, uh, even though we've had a lot of complaint, not complaints, but concern for the kids at the baseball fields, because that's, that gets a lot of mosquitoes down there. So I, I think that we should approve it myself.
Could you, um, give the general public real specific directions on what they need to do if they wanna call to not have their property sprayed?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do more to get the word out there. We'll have something on the website, and we'll, we'll go on local radio, local media as well, and put it out there. But, uh, just simply, uh, call Raton City Hall. That's, uh, 575-445-9551. Any of us that answer the phone, you can just give a message. Just tell us where your property is. Tell us what your address is. Uh, this is within the municipal boundaries only. That's all that we control. And, uh, we will communicate that to the contractor, uh, to avoid spraying. If you live outside the municipal boundaries, you'll wanna talk directly to Colfax County. So, uh, you know, they're easy to contact as well. But simply call the number 9551, and we will add you to the list. We'll, we, we expect that, those communications. That has worked, Commissioner, uh, over the past years, uh, where people have, have wanted to opt out, contacted us, and, and, uh, we've skipped over those properties.
Very good. And if you wanna support your beekeeping neighbors, you might call for them. If you have a next-door neighbor who's a beekeeper.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County for the vector control services.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the, the agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County for vector control services. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate and act on purchase of sanitation truck utilizing statewide price agreement, 00-00000-20-00088. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, uh, this is for, this is a, uh, a pickup and, uh, Ford F-150, uh, extended cab vehicle that would be used in the, in the sanitation department. We do have the Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, here. Jason, I don't know if you wanna give us the details, uh, on this, but it's not a garbage truck. It is a pickup truck.
Mayor Commission, I will be brief. Essentially, you know, we've had, uh, pickup trucks in the budget going back to 2020 fiscal year and have been unable to fill those orders. So we've reached out to every statewide price agreement vendor over the last several years and said, you know, if, specifically, if an F-250 were to come around, we'd love to have two of those. Um, F-250s are still in short supply. Uh, three-quarter-ton trucks are hard to come by. So essentially, we would buy a half-ton extended cab truck. Um, one of our public works superintendent has a 2019 F-250. We would shift it to the crew to use for heavy hauling operations, transition him into this vehicle, and save a little gas on the basics of what we do behind a better rig. Um, we have a number of trucks in next year's budget, so we anticipate that we would come back with this as things normalize. Um, the pricing has gone up. The F-250s that we bought in 2019 were $28,000. You can see this truck is $44,832, and it is a half-ton, uh, extended cab versus a club cab pickup, but there has been pretty massive inflation on the truck front. But, um, we would essentially kick one of the 1990s model trucks out of the fleet that's got some operation or maintenance problems and would improve the fleet vastly by doing so. Have you answered any questions, if anyone has one?
Yeah, just on the price, I was going through some Capitol LA requests today for centers. Three years ago, we bought hot-shot trucks for the senior center, and they averaged right at $51,000. This year, the quote that they have for the same truck, $81,000. For the same truck. It's crazy.
It is. Well, I will move to approve the purchase.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item H, deliberate and act on purchase of police radios from Code 3 Service LLC utilizing the state police, our state price agreement, number 20-00000-21-00030. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, under this proposal in front of you, um, Raton Police Department has, uh, budgeted funds that are, uh, budgeted for personnel expenses. They're unspent because we are understaffed in Raton Police Department. The chief has proposed that we, uh, move some of those funds over to meet an equipment need, specifically buying, uh, 15 portable radios. The radios will come with, uh, the battery, antenna, belt clip, uh, a charger, programming, and a, uh, leather case. And, uh, uh, there's 15 of those. The proposal you see there is a total of $29,877.94. Those would be funds that you'll see later in the budget, uh, adjustment that's proposed and moved within the police department, but they, they were budgeted for personnel. These radios are available. We do expect to take delivery of them, uh, in June, if, upon your consideration of the cost proposal, uh, that you have in your packet.
All righty. Any questions, comments for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the police radios from Code 3 Services LLC utilizing the state price agreement as listed.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve purchase of the radios. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on Quirroga Pfeiffer Engineering Corp., City Hall Structural Repair Fee Proposal. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, uh, the next two items on the agenda are really talking about, uh, dam, structural damage to city buildings. I think in both cases, this is related to poor drainage. And, and we have a couple of things here. We need some structural repairs to the, both buildings, but we also need to, uh, evaluate that drainage and come up with a solution to improve the drainage. I think in both cases, this is, this is caused by drainage deficiencies. And of course, in a year where we're getting a lot of rain, uh, this really shows up. And so, under, uh, this current item, we are looking at, uh, a proposal for, uh, structural engineering analysis and design for repair of, uh, settlement to the building, uh, that would be provided by Quirroga Pfeiffer Engineering Corporation. Uh, specifically, I met with Richard Pfeiffer. He is a, uh, he owns, he's a principal of the company, but, uh, he's a Raton guy. This business is located in Albuquerque. Uh, Richard came up and, and, uh, looked at, uh, both buildings with us. In the case of, uh, City Hall, we're talking about the, the west side of the building where we get drainage off of the roof. Uh, we've had some settling there. That can actually be repaired. Uh, what the engineer will do, uh, for that repair is, uh, come up with a, a recommendation for you on, on the repairs, how to go about that. And, uh, I would expect that the cost of those repairs is gonna be fairly significant. And so we'll see that after we get, uh, into it and probably take a seal bid for the repairs. And then we'll have another similar case under the next agenda item for you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
Yeah, we'll comment that he proposes to, uh, do the evaluation on Raton City Hall for a cost of $4,700. That's the engineering cost.
I know probably the answer to this question, but is there any chance insurance could cover some of this?
That's possible. We can, we can certainly pose that question. If it were possible.
It's definitely needed.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I will move to approve.
Can we, can we make a motion and cover these both at one time?
Well, if Mr. Berry would like to talk about the Coors Building, sure.
I, I would.
It's the same company.
Yep, it's up to you. I'll jump into the, uh, the second proposal is specific to the Coors Building. Really, when we, when we're getting into the project there, we noticed, uh, that we have a situation where water coming off the roof, it drains to the back of the building. Uh, originally, it drained to the alley. However, there was some changes over time. We're, we don't understand really when that happened. But a lot of, uh, the drainage was either running down the wall or going into the basement. And this is a historic building, more than 100 years old. It's constructed of, uh, brick, which has mortar, and then it has a sandstone foundation, also mortared. Uh, so that, that wetness causes deterioration of brick or sandstone and the mortar. And so we're gonna need some structural repairs on that. There is a full basement in the building. There also is this two-story, uh, brick building, and this rear wall is in poor condition. This is more challenging than the City Hall, uh, situation. Uh, and so we do have a, uh, a fee that reflects that. Uh, the proposed fee is $9,300, uh, for that. The repair is also gonna be challenging and not inexpensive.
Yeah.
All righty. Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve, uh, item I and item J, uh, at this time?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item I, the City Hall Repair, and item J, the Coors Building Wall and Foundation Repair. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-32 Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Lake Dorothy State Wildlife Area Management Plan. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, uh, you recall that, uh, the process of, uh, uh, negotiating the, the lease, the renewal of an existing lease with Colorado Parks and Wildlife for the, uh, Lake Dorothy State Wildlife Area, roughly 5,700-acre area owned by the city of Raton. We own that for, uh, purposes of a water resource. We have responsibility for Lake Dorothy, uh, dam, uh, on that property. And, and generally, we maintain it for watershed area, uh, influence to, uh, Lake Malloy. But the ownership allows us to, uh, control development, potentially development above our, our, uh, our primary drinking water supply. But we have leased it to Colorado Parks and Wildlife for a number of years, uh, as we discussed. As a part of that discussion, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, CPW, uh, agreed to draft a management plan. They have done that. You all have that available, uh, to you. And you recall the discussion that generally, in the, uh, east side of the portion of the property, in the area of Lake Dorothy, the city of Raton wanted more, uh, public access, more public recreation opportunities. We laid out a proposal for, uh, trails that would be available to the public. Uh, CPW countered that this is, uh, important habitat, specifically for elk and mule deer. Generally, we agree that that, that, uh, habitat generally takes place on the west side, in the Bobblers Knob area. And the agreement comes up with a, uh, uh, and it's reflected in the management plan that you have, that will have year-round access to recreation trails in the Lake Dorothy area on the east side of the property, and then seasonally restricted trails on the west side of the property in the Bobblers Knob area or in the Swashheim Creek, uh, area. So you see those trails laid out, uh, in the map. Generally, what we had talked about, I think there's one, uh, revision here, but among the trails, there's a, uh, a loop around Lake Malloy. Uh, most of that is in New Mexico. However, previously, there had been, uh, some conflict, I understand, with Colorado about, uh, going from, going around Malloy and winding up at the, at the Lake Dorothy parking lot. Uh, that is a year-round available trail. You see that on the map, uh, in the appendices, Appendix A, uh, section. That's marked in a, uh, purple color. It's not, the, the New Mexico portion is not shown in that, but that's available. And then, uh, uh, Trail A marked in red. That goes from the parking lot, generally around, uh, Lake Dorothy, and starts heading east. And, uh, it, it meets, uh, Trail B and Trail C at a point in a, uh, in a, in the middle canyon. It's an unnamed canyon between Swashheim and Sagerstrom. Uh, and then Trail C will continue on, uh, to the west, to the Bobblers Knob area. That will be seasonally restricted, but Trail B is a year-round trail. Uh, and Trail B actually is, uh, uh, a road that was put in place for, uh, track fire reclamation activities. It was, uh, water barred so that vehicles couldn't use it, but it is a, a road that's available, uh, currently for, for hiking, uh, for, uh, mountain biking. currently for hiking, for mountain biking, non-vehicle uses on that trail. So, A and B are shown in there, available currently, the Malloy Trail. And then lastly, you see the Orange Trail. That is a seasonally restricted trail that generally goes up Swashheim Canyon. That's the canyon that generally contributes to Lake Dorothy. So, that's what we see. There's some additional maps showing you habitat areas in there, but, and I think Commissioner Chatterley might have had a couple of comments on this, but this is a submittal by CPW. They had asked that the commission take the action to adopt the plan. And that's what's up for consideration tonight.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I?
Nope.
So, I have my Lake Dorothy. It should be stated while the management plan suggested revisions. And I also have a pad. Thank you, Desiree, for making copies and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
The Fisher's Peak State Park Framework Concept as well. This isn't the actual what's open at Fisher's Peak, but what I liked about this map that they created, that they made it very clear with their hash areas what is seasonally closed. And I thought it might be easier at a glance to have the same system with Lake Dorothy. So, that's what's at the bottom in the appendices area. But essentially, for paragraphs four, five, and eight, the Trail A, Trail B, and the Malloy Perimeter Bike Trail as their name, I just have them adding this trail will be open year-round to the end of the paragraphs, just to be very crystal clear about that since it's not openly stated. The other ones do state closures, but this one doesn't state that it will be open. And then if there is, since that Trail, sorry, Trail B has been moved over to that road, that we could take out the portion that says, adjust the description of the road that's on the updated map regarding the trail location and omit the construction component if there is already an existing road. And then otherwise, it's just kind of clearing up the map with the hash marks of what's actually closed and what will be open year-round. That's all I have.
Okay. And Mr. Berry, I believe you talked to them, and they were amenable to continue these changes?
That's correct, Mayor.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
Comments? We have a comment from the audience?
I'm Leslie Fernandez, and I'm not sure now, based on Commissioner Chatterley's information, Trail B has now changed location.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, just to go over this again. Originally, we talked about going a little further west, and that would be building a new trail. However, there's a good trail in place. It's down this unnamed central canyon, and we just agreed that that serves Trail B right now today.
I'm trying to picture where it is.
Yeah.
Now that I know it's changed. About six weeks ago, I emailed four city fathers and city manager and the CPW supervisor who presented the CPW side of the lease, as well as Adam Friddell, who is the primary gay warden for Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I got one response back, that was from Adam Friddell, about what happened with the management plan that was supposed to take place six months after the lease was signed. And he told me, he didn't tell me about the change in location, because I was asking specifically, where is it? Can I go and have you mark it for me? And I will maintain it if no one's going to maintain it. And I got an answer back from him that said CPW is not maintaining that, A or B. And so, then I included Superintendent Luba of the New Mexico State Parks, because before COVID, the little, the four-tenths of a mile of the extension of the Lake Malloy Trail to the Lake Dorothy parking lot was actually maintained by the state parks. They mowed it just as a courtesy, even though it was in Colorado. I got a very concise response from Walter, who said, "We're not doing it. We're not mowing it. We're not, we don't have the personnel, and we're not doing it." So, that leaves, it's great on paper that those two trails are there, but that leaves the question of who's going to maintain it. And that was one of my concerns when you all authorized the lease or agreed to the lease, was that it's great to say there's two hiking and mountain biking trails there, but if there's no maintenance and there's no mowing or cutting or siphing or anything, they're not usable, period. And so, I even asked Warden Friddell if Colorado Parks and Wildlife would make an exception, because believe me, these are not, these are not free to people. These are not open to people year-round like it looks here. You have to have a state wildlife area pass, fifty dollars a person per year, to go the four-tenths of a mile on Lake Dorothy extension. And what the new road is probably less than a half a mile, and you still need that pass. So, I asked him if someone that didn't have a pass would be willing to help maintain that trail, would they be able to? The answer was a resounding no. So, it basically has taken out the state parks. It has taken out the CPW for maintaining it. It's taken out individuals who are interested in opening those trails, because I guess it's a committee of one, me, that would do it. But I asked the city, what maintenance is the city able to do up there to open these two trails year-round to those very few of us who have a state wildlife area pass? It's basically, they're basically nonusable at this point. I was hoping to get a response before all the rain, so that it was a little drier to try to clear that. If it's an established road, City Manager Berry, then that may solve that one. It doesn't solve the Lake Malloy extension. But I'm just having trouble picturing a road that goes from the current fire roads that go to the south of Dorothy, south, to hit onto Opportunity Trail. I mean, I know that area pretty well, and I'm not familiar with that road. But I asked the city to solve this, because you all gave the land to CPW, knowing that they weren't going to maintain it. And if it's not maintained, it's not usable, neither one of them.
Mayor Commission, I'd just try to answer that. Trail A and Trail C is the CPW road. They do maintain that. What we've seen recently is they had some equipment up there that really heavily waterbarred it. What that does is it prevents erosion on the road. It also makes it really tough to drive on it on a vehicle. We had earlier done that on this road through unnamed canyon, which is now Trail B. And the one thing that can happen to trails in the way of maintenance, I guess there's a couple of things. You can get shrubs or brush that grow up in the trail. I think that takes some time. But erosion is probably the biggest thing that you are concerned about. We did reclaim the road, and we did install the water bars to try to cut down that erosion. What I'll do, you know, with this is, it's hard to tell from this map really where those trails are. I'll try to really do a, an increased, more readable map, maybe using Google Earth, to try to show where this Trail B is. And once you get up there, you say, okay, well, that makes sense. There it is. But Trail A and C, that is CPW-maintained road. They generally put some equipment on that annually. They're really the only ones that drive on it. As far as vehicles, they use it to get to the James and John. We did look at this last year, and of course, pretty tough to drive on it because of the water bars installed. But that's the advantage to it, is you don't have the erosion factor. Hadn't seen any brush growing on any of these in my trips up there. And, you know, that leaves the Lake Malloy Trail. And so, we don't have an answer for that yet. I think it would be good if we worked out something to mow that. I don't, I think we can with CPW. I think it's just a conversation now. I don't know, I mean, I guess my thought would be maybe we have a contractor try to mow that a couple of times a year to make that viable. That's what I'd propose. You're getting a revenue from the lease. I think we could fund some improvements like that. And then I think, you know, we may, we look at Trail B and see what we need on an ongoing basis. I think with all this rain, there are a couple of sediment impoundments located in that unnamed canyon, and we need to go, we have seven sediment impoundments from the track fire days with all the rain. Typically, we would go inspect those and look at the condition of those. And in the past, we've had a little maintenance work on spillways specifically. So, that's possible, that we could have somebody up there doing a little work on those. Let me schedule a trip up there and inspect those. I'll look at the trail as well. We'll see what's going on with it. And I would suggest that periodically, we have contractor services work up there.
All righty.
I like that solution. I think that's a good solution. Stay up on that. And like you said, the lease does provide some funds to be able to do that. And I, and as I was reading through, and seeing those roads up there, I mean, typically a road doesn't make the best trail, but it's what's already there. And I think just trying to get something actually constructed from New Mexico, there's no grant funds that we're going to be able to use in Colorado, you know, so I think it's the best solution for now for that, to have that maintenance.
They're going to be the two-track road that you typically see.
And generally, the road around the lake, I mean, it's, or not the road, sorry. The trail around Lake Malloy that comes in, it's pretty, you know, established trail, but it does get grown over with, you know, as we've gotten all this rain with the grass and whatnot.
Now, if I remember right, before the track fire, some years back, the Swashheim Trail was a project under the youth program, the...
Rocky Mountain Corps or...
I think something like that. There were maybe at least one summer, but maybe a couple of summers where there, through a partnership with Colorado, there was, there was a work crew that worked on that, clearing that. I don't know what the condition of that trail is right now. That's been some years ago. And following the track fire, what we saw is a lot of growth of Gambles Oak and the New Mexico Locust. That stuff really takes off. So, that could be an issue on that trail, was the growth of brush.
I didn't think that, you know, when we went on Trail B and we came down to, there's two sediment ponds before you get to Lake Malloy. It was, it wasn't the greatest trail in the world, but it was a passable, good trail, I thought. And another thing is, is that you can't go to the Colorado Park and tell them that they have to do this and that. The Colorado Parks and Recreation are going to have to agree to do some things like that with us. If you go to Simroon or to Eagle Nest, you've got to pay what they ask, or you don't get to use the facilities. So, I think that they've been good with us overall and good partners in this, and I think that we should continue to do it like we're asking.
Well, I think Mr. Berry came up with a possible solution, so we'll look into that.
I think it's good.
And move forward from there. Any other discussion? We have a resolution in front of us.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-32, the CPW Lake Dorothy State Wildlife Area Management Plan, including the suggested provisions that I proposed and that discussion about with the city taking part of those things that we discussed.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Is that management plan available from the city?
Yeah. I actually give you a copy here right now, and we'll scan it. We'll put it on the website there also. That's the unrevised copy, so there's a couple of revisions we'll ask.
Is there a revision paper here, if you'd like one?
I got one.
Okay.
Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-33, election resolution for regular local election on November 7, 2023. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, generally, the municipal election will be held in November. You'll recall the state law change on municipal elections. They generally, well, the municipality has some options, but in the case of Rattone, it'll go on that November ballot with everything else. We don't run the election here like we used to years ago. It is conducted by the county clerk now. However, we have some business to go over, and I would call on Michael and Antonucci to put the resolution together for you to come forward and give you the details on the resolution, the process, and answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Actually, I'd like to give Desiree, our new city clerk, credit, because she actually prepared the resolution, so, but I'd be more than happy to go over it with you. As the city manager stated, I think two years ago was the first, they call it now the regular local election that we had. You'll recall that we had adopted an ordinance offering in to allow the county to take over our elections. And then, at that same time, we extended the terms of the commission to get on this schedule. So, this will be the second election that we've had, the regular local election. And as the city manager stated, that the ballot will include everybody in the county, probably Springer, Maxwell, Eagle Nest, Angel Fire, including school boards that would have positions as well. So, it's a pretty lengthy ballot. And then if there's any questions, those would also be included. We do not have any tax questions or anything like that for the city of Rattone. So, on our resolution that will be submitted to Reida Trahill, who's the county clerk, it states that the election will be November 7. And the city of Rattone will have three positions. We'll have District 1 and 3. Those are both commissioner positions for four-year terms. And then we also have the municipal judge, which is also a four-year term. And so, you'll see there that the declarations of candidacy can be filed, and that's only on one day, and that's August 29, between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 p.m., and that's at the office of the county clerk. And then if a candidate so wishes, they could also be a write-in candidate, and they would have to file their write-in candidacy on September 5, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. at the county clerk's office. So, this resolution, we also have a Spanish version that Desiree will be submitting to the county clerk, and then she'll submit the information to the Secretary of State's office and kind of start the process.
All righty. Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Hopefully, we're not traveling to Farmington on that day for municipal league.
Oh, yeah, that is kind of a...
Coming up, it's right after that, I think, on the 30th or 31st.
The end of the month.
It's the week before Labor Day. It's going to be close. You might, Mayor Calhoun in Red River, the last election, had to miss the municipal league because of registration there.
I think they still have the option where you could appoint a representative, but you would have to fill out a form and have it notarized and give somebody the ability to register for you that day. But I would certainly, if that was something that you needed to do, I would definitely meet with the Colfax County Clerk to discuss your options. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Chatterley, Commissioner Chatterley's here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, I know we've talked about this before. We do have districts... We do have districts, but because our population is under 10,000, uh, all of our commissioners really serve at large and do not have to reside within the district that they represent. So, we get that question a lot, especially people that are, uh, interested in running.
Yep. People that are new to the community. Would you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-33, election resolution for regular local election on November 7th, 2023.
Have motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2023-33. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate act on Resolution 2023-34, adopting changes to the travel policy relating to the reimbursement and travel for per diem and mileage expenses to public officers and employees of the city while on city business. Michael Ann, I guess since you're standing there, you're gonna be the one talking to us, huh?
Uh, Mayor Commission, in your packet, uh, we do have a copy of the memo that was received from the Department of Finance. Uh, we generally receive that in April, May of every year, uh, notifying us if there's gonna be any changes in the, uh, rates for the, uh, per diem, uh, which could include the meal and also the partial day per diem rates. So for this year, uh, we would recommend that we increase our stated per diem rates. Uh, it would be going for like the in-state, we have a special area for Colfax, or I'm sorry, County of Santa Fe, and then an out-of-state rate. Um, it's a very small adjustment, it went up $2. So, I, I guess actually, the in-state special area went up $8, but the other two went up $2. So we would be increasing the in-state per diem for overnight travel to 157, which is also the out-of-state rate, and then the Santa Fe County Special Area is 210. There was no change to the, uh, meal reimbursement, which is a maximum of $59, and then also the partial day, uh, per diem rates remained the same. Uh, with that, we would recommend your consideration and approval. Uh, I've also included a revised copy of our mileage and per diem, uh, policy. This does go into effect July 1st.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-34, adopting changes to travel policy relating to reimbursement and travel, per diem mileage expense, et cetera.
I'll second.
Have motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2023-34. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate an act on Resolution 2023-35, budget adjustment number 17, fiscal year 23. Mike Lan, would you like a chair?
Hey, this is a, a short budget adjustment this evening. Uh, we do have some line item adjustments in our, our general fund, uh, mainly with the action that was taken this evening to approve the purchase of the radios for the police department. I would be moving $15,000 from the salaries. Um, I already had some money budgeted in the Capitol Outlay Equipment, so if I move $15,000, that'll give me enough for the purchase of the radios. Um, the others are just line item adjustments, and then also, when I was working with the, the budget, we recently had a reimbursement request on the, uh, project for the depot architectural design, and I was noticing in the budget that I actually had budgeted the, uh, transfer using the wrong line item number, so that it's clear, the transfer is coming out of the lodger's tax, non-promotional, and that's the city's matching funds for the Main Street grant. So I'm just kind of cleaning that up. That was an error that was made last year during the budget process. Um, and then in solid waste, uh, we had initially budgeted $40,000 for the purchase of a vehicle, but as you heard from the Public Works Director this evening, the price of the vehicles have gone up significantly, so I'm moving $5,000 into that line item for that purchase that was approved. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I'm going to order to adopt Resolution 2023-35, budget adjustment 17, fiscal year 23.
Second.
Have motion and two seconds to adopt Resolution 2023-35. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item O, deliberate an act on Resolution 2023-36, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency. Michael Ann, or Mr. Barry, which one is it?
I'll let Michael Ann talk about this.
All righty.
Mayor Commission, we do bring to you, uh, this evening for consideration, uh, we are looking, or at least the Raton Fire and Emergency Services is looking to surplus two of our older high-mileage, uh, ambulances. You'll see that, uh, one ambulance has 313,880 miles, and the other has 252,674 miles. Um, and those are pretty much highway, highway miles. Um, the department does an excellent job in maintaining their fleet, but despite the, the age, one is a 2009 and the other's a 2013, um, we would like to surplus them to remove from the city's fixed asset listing, including the gurneys in each, but to donate those to the city of Tucumcari. Um, they're kind of a, a victim of the supply chain issues that we've all suffered from the last couple of years, and it's very difficult. As you know, we've approved the purchase of one ambulance in this, uh, current fiscal year budget, but we're told that it's still not gonna be here till February, potentially of '24, so we've rebudgeted for that in next year's budget, and then in addition to that, we did budget, um, to purchase another Type 2 ambulance, which was 180,000, and then the Type 1 ambulance is 369,478. So here, hopefully, in the next fiscal year, we would have two brand-new ambulances added to our fleet. So, um, I've included the rest of the information here, the barcodes and estimated values, uh, which is required by DFA. So upon your approval this evening, we would then send it to DFA, because it is a donation to another governmental agency, and it requires their approval. And I'm told that Tucumcari has come, and they've actually seen them, driven them, and, and are still interested, so.
Cool.
Very good.
Any questions or comments?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-26, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency.
Second.
Have motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2023-36. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item P, city manager report. Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give you a brief report, starting with, uh, an update, uh, on a grant application that we had prepared and submitted. This was, uh, to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for their brownfield program, and we had, uh, proposed to, uh, uh, abate and remediate up to 30 problem properties in Raton as part of our, our cleanup campaign. Uh, it was a lengthy process, but we did find out a couple of weeks ago that we were not funded, uh, for that. Uh, we do have some cooperation going through the state brownfield program. They're also funded by federal funds, but, uh, we've got a couple of projects in the works actively. But for the federal grant application, we would look at, uh, resubmitting on this, and the cycle will be coming up this fall. We'll have a chance to talk to USCBA, uh, about their perspective on it. They'll give us some insight on, uh, you know, what we, what we could do on the application to have a better chance of funding, so that'll take place at the end of July. Uh, then in general, I want to give you an update on some of the infrastructure projects that we've talked about. Uh, first of all, is the new airport hangar. Construction is substantially complete on the hangar. Uh, we had to wait until the, uh, electric co-op installed the electric meter and provided electric service to the building in order to complete the alarm system and, uh, one of the minor electrical, uh, components. That work is, the, the meter is installed, and we do have electrical service there. Uh, the electrician or the alarm subcontractor is completing that work. We understand it'll be complete tomorrow, and then, uh, it'll require a final inspection by the building inspector and issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so, uh, we would expect to wrap that up, uh, within the next week, I would say. Uh, we did complete today the application of the second course of asphalt and aggregate on our, uh, on our, uh, citywide pavement preservation project, the chip seal project. Uh, so two courses of aggregate and asphalt were applied on all project streets. That's the eight miles of streets that we had talked about, uh, earlier, so we're down to the end of that project. Uh, additional work will require, uh, brooming, clean up some of the loose aggregate, uh, we'll see if there's any corrective work that we want the contractor to reform, uh, and then we will fog seal all of those streets. So we would, uh, expect to start the fog seal, uh, within a couple of days and complete all of that work within about 10 days. An update on the Sugar E Avenue project, we talked about earlier here, the majority of the concrete work is complete. Uh, we did talk about some additional concrete work tonight, um, but the additional concrete work will be completed in two to three weeks, uh, and then, uh, the remaining work will consist of pavement preservation work, that's a microseal application on that street, uh, pavement markings, signage, and the addition of bollards, and so, uh, I would say all of those, plus what we're gonna talk about are weather-dependent. We've lost some time, uh, because of, of heavy rain from time to time. Uh, Frontage Road Reconstruction Project is scheduled to commence this week. Uh, we would anticipate a late fall, early winter completion of, uh, that project, so that will take place, uh, south of Clayton Road, between Clayton Road and Raton Creek, and the contractor, HO Construction, will be mobilizing there this week. And then lastly, Mayor, uh, update on the photovoltaic construction is underway. Uh, the progress includes completion of site fencing. Uh, we're, uh, making our way through the framing procedure. I anticipate that we'll start, uh, placing panels, uh, next week. That'll go pretty quickly. I think the interconnection work with RPSA system, uh, will be the thing that's probably the most complicated and time-consuming, so still some time on building the distribution portion of it and the interconnection, but the, the PV portion should be in, in place within a couple of weeks, I would think. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry.
Let, uh, we went out and looked at it, and that's gonna be a big, uh, pretty big, uh, build.
If, if we, when we get it all.
And it's all done, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So. Any other questions for Mr. Barry? This time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed section, closed executive session pursuant to Section 10151, H2, Personnel, City Manager.
Second.
Have motion and a second to go into closed executive session. Desiree, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
We're in closed session, we'll take a recess and allow Marty to gather up his belongings.
And other things.
And other things.